I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Public comment or any?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. The public comment portion of our meeting provides residents and taxpayers of Butler County a reasonable opportunity to comment on matters of concern, official action, or deliberation which are or may be before the board prior to taking official action. Presentations must be limited to three minutes. The chairman has asked me to remind everyone that no personal attacks on the character or reputation of county employees, department heads, or any official will be tolerated. Any speaker doing so may be ruled out of order by the chair. I'll call the names and be ordered that they appear on the sign-up sheet, and when you come to the podium, please state your name and municipality of residence. Mark Krenitzky.
How are you, Commissioners? I need to go first. That's first. I stopped by, saw Commissioner Eckstein on Sunday at his house in Evans City. Gonna say it's looking pretty good, I think. I still stopped in yesterday, Commissioner Pinkerton, about possible, he talked about a new building, and I was, I just was curious about that. I guess I was the only one to do that here, call or stop by. One of the two, I don't wanna go on what we talked about, but what he said, and I really liked, and I wish more government people would say this too, is he said, "Well, we're gonna see how much money we have. We're not gonna, you know, we're gonna see how much money we have left over from the Sunnyview itself before we consider building this." So, I like that. I was at a ballot township meeting, and this does affect the county. I was concerned they enacted an all-in-dance advisory board, I guess is what it's called. This doesn't affect me. The only thing that I can see, I don't see too many more wells being drilled in Butler Township, there's just not that much open space. However, there is one, and that's Alameda Park. You know I'd like to see a well next to or in Alameda Park, so I'd like to see the county get the revenues from the well. Okay, that's it, guys. Thanks.
Okay, in response to your remark, Mark. We are not allowed to drill on the Alameda Park property itself.
Right.
And I have put inquiries out, and I think they'll talk to people about leasing that, but we haven't found anybody that's willing to lease it at this point. But it would certainly be a revenue generator for the county, and they could drill, I think it probably is around a well. You're probably clear over under Alameda if they had the leases in between the two, because you're probably quite a mile from Alameda.
No, it's more than that.
Is it? Okay. But that's the reason it hasn't been anything done with it yet, we've tried.
Because, which you talked about, we're getting, what, $2 million properly from the well that the county has now. I believe that's only below over 100 acres, and this should be over 400 acres. So, is that correct? Am I off in my math?
Yes, you are.
Okay. How much is my off?
I don't know. Maybe, how much?
It's the total county you're talking about, not one, what we're getting from Sunnyview.
Sunnyview, the checks are what, I think, were from $30,000 to $95,000 a month.
Okay.
So, they vary depending on how much they're taking out, I guess it depends on how much they can put in their, through their pipeline. All right, thank you, Mark.
I'd like to say this to Mark. Last, we're only at 40% of the projected revenue from the gas well revenue. At Sunnyview, it was over. I thought it was over projected, and I called up somebody yesterday, and they said it was at 40% of the, what they projected it would be, which didn't surprise me, because I thought it was too high anyways. And that's approximately where we're at, but...
Okay, next.
James Eckstein.
James Eckstein, Butler Township. My two talks today are no-bid professional service contracts and the lack of professional ethics by some of the commissioners and their subcontractors. A recent example of ethics in the news would be Seamus McCaffrey. McCaffrey, who is a P.A. Supreme Court Justice, who allegedly sent pornographic and raunchy emails over the internet. I don't know who besides what's raunchy and pornographic or not. Who should be the judge? Billy Graham Jr. or Hugh Hefner? Or maybe somebody in between? I'm glad I'm not one making a decision. In any case, McCaffrey has been suspended for 30 days pending a review of his ethics. Let's see, in Butler County, what would happen if an unnamed law firm owner that subcontracts work for Butler County, if he is accused and arrested of alleged DUI? Let's say first he was allegedly involved in a hit-and-run accident, then allegedly tried to drive down I-79 on-ramp going the opposite direction by Seneca Valley High School. He was going the wrong way. Then allegedly he was weaving all over a two-lane road for over a mile while the Jackson Township Police were following him. Then allegedly, after being stopped, he couldn't even pass a single DUI test. These allegations are all in the police report from Jackson Township earlier in this year. Now, does that affect your employment status with Butler County? Nope, in Pinkerton's and McCarver's view, no suspension, no loss of pay, no penalty at all, just more and more no-bid contracts with the county. The other commissioners should be ashamed of their actions. Most county employees would be fired for these actions. We seem to have a two-tiered system of justice in our county. It disgusts me. On a separate matter, for no-bid contracts being given to friends and political supporters, I'd like to report Dale Pinkerton's private attorney, Doug Lynn. Mr. Lynn has been awarded over $20,000 in no-bid contracts this year alone. Mr. Lynn is suing me on behalf of Pinkerton all the while by awarding no-bid county contract. Is this a conflict of interest? Absolutely yes. Is this unethical? Absolutely yes. Being, believe these actions are perverting our democratic process in Butler County for political retaliation against me. I think these deliberate actions are blatant corruption of the political process. Your actions make me sick. This behavior has no place in our county government, none. Pinkerton and McCarver believe they are non-touchable, just like Joe and Lori Melvin. Only time will tell. Thank you, County Commissioner Jim Eckstein.
Next.
That's all for public comment.
All right, thank you. We have minutes from our October 6th and our October 8th meeting. Is there a motion to approve these minutes?
Some move.
Is there a second? I'll second it. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The minutes are approved. Full business.
Yes, sir. We would like gratification of a quote from Motorola Solutions Incorporated in the amount of $140,615.92 for the equipment necessary to repair and update the county's 911 radio system on an emergency basis. You'll recall that approval to enter into this contract is given at the October 8th, 2014 public meeting.
I'll make the move.
I'll second it.
Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The motion carries.
Under new business, the first item is the pro bonos office. Glenna Walters.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning.
I'm seeking the approval of the contract with the Infocom Corporation for software to help with the civil collection costs. These costs would be the family court, PFA costs that the court has directed that the individual pay. It would streamline the operation, and we would be able to collect more money for the county. And I would appreciate your vote for this contract. Thank you.
Does there a second to the motion?
I'll second that.
Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The motion carries. Thanks, Glenna. Thanks for all the good work you do.
Next, under the Treasury Office, Diane Marburger.
Good morning, Commissioners. This morning, I'm asking the Board's cooperation in entering a services agreement with Smart Phil Limited for the production of the dog license, three goals for 2015. We received the lowest picks on them, $0.53 apiece, for approximately $12,000 goals for $6,306. This amount is fully reimbursed to us by the Law &amp; Law Office in Harrisburg, and I'm asking your approval for this agreement.
Is there a motion to approve this? Some move. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The motion carries.
Thank you. And one other thing, for those dog owners who renewed their licenses online, they'll be getting an email. There's about 6,000 folks that do them online, so we'll be sending out emails to let them know about the upcoming year.
Thank you, and happy all the dogs in Butler County.
That's right. Thank you very much. May I be dismissed?
Yes.
Got any questions, Tom?
You have any questions, Tom?
Okay, thank you.
Next, under Court Administration, Tom Holman.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Hi, Tom.
I wonder if this morning can inform you of a contract that has been entered into by the Congress of Pennsylvania through the Department of Public Welfare with DDC DNA Diagnostic Center to provide genetic testing for the domestic relations section. I need from you acknowledgement of that agreement, as well as your approval for the controller to make payments on bills that we receive from them. DDC continues to be the vendor that we currently pay, however, there's been a reduction in the cost from $32 to $83.95 a test. So today, I'm asking for your acknowledgement of that agreement, and your approval for the controller to make those payments.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second.
I'd like to say this.
Okay.
I really appreciate you stayed on top of this, Tom. This is a big reduction, so I really appreciate the Court saving us any way they can, and these tests are critical, whether you're guilty or innocent, or, well, not guilty or innocent, whether you're the...
Whether you're the dad or not.
Yeah, whether you're the dad or not, let's not say guilty or innocent. But thank you very much, Tom, okay?
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The motion carries.
Next, under Facilities and Operations, John Campbell.
Good morning, Commissioner.
Good morning, John.
First thing I have for you today is a change order for a German summer engine project. This would be change order FPC-1 of SA Quanlinell for the upside of the fire pump, the amount of $10,257.
I'll make the motion. Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second that, but, John, could you please explain to the public what happened there, or why that cost is? I'd appreciate it.
It's due to COVID review, and it is basically upsizing the pump from a 60-horsepower pump to a 75-horsepower pump, and then boosting the pressure.
Through the court request of the inspection agency, correct?
Yeah, COVID review.
Yeah, yeah, the COVID review, so this, they caught a correction here. Nothing's been done, so we caught it and corrected the mistake, so I appreciate that.
Those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The motion carries.
John, mistake me and categorize this one that pumps in.
Wrong pumps in.
Okay, thank you.
The second thing I have on the agenda is the Simples contracts for the county of Butler. I would like to renew them. I have more on the agenda for contingent on completion of the contracts. They have not yet been completed, and I will resubmit them next week.
I'll make that motion.
Second. Those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, John.
Thanks, John.
Next, under Human Resources, Lori Hallman.
Good morning, Lori.
Good morning, Commissioner. I'm asking your approval to renew an agreement for the Vision Benefits of America for the employee's vision plan with authorization for the county. The agreement reflects a 2% increase. It's $6.83 per month for single member and $15.25 per family. The rates are guaranteed for two years, starting January 1st of 2015 through December 31st of 2016. May I ask your approval?
I'll make the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lori.
Next, under Human Services, Community Action and Development, Janine Kennedy.
Good morning.
Thank you. Lori.
We are requesting to amend the 2014-2015 Medical Assistance Transportation Program contract with Alliance for nonprofit resources. Purpose of this amendment is to outline the live vehicle mile rate policy that was recently implemented by the P.A. Department of Public Welfare for the medical assistance transportation program. The term and total amount of the contract does not change. May I ask your approval?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second that.
Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The motion carries.
We are requesting to amend the 2013-2014 Support Services for Veteran Families contract with Center for Community Resources. Purpose of this amendment is to increase the total contract amount from $1.25,000 to Butler County received an increase in funding to cover the actual cost for the 13-year contract. Term of the contract remains the same, October 1st, 13 through September 30th, 2014. May I ask your approval?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second that.
Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Next, under Planning Commission, Joel McKee.
Good morning, Commissioner.
Good morning, Joel.
Commissioners, in March of 2013, Pendott accepted our application for grant money under a program called the Congestive Corridor Program. The county received a grant under the specific category of the program called Dynamic Truck Restriction Solutions. In March of this year, $435,000 was awarded to the county under our application named City of Butler Dynamic Truck Restrictions/Tuck Routes. This grant does not require any county contribution, is funded with 80% federal and 20% state dollars. Butler County Planning Commission will advertise requests for proposals and qualifications through Pendott. If Pendott approves, engineering firm will be contracted to prepare preliminary engineering, the traffic impact study, and comprehensive construction cost estimates. I am requesting today your approval of the Pendott reimbursement agreement with the county to amend to this program.
I'll make the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
As I said, Joel, I'm not criticizing you. I just can't believe that the state is going to spend over $400,000 to determine where a dollar of truck ride...
Well, the state is 20%. It's federal 8%.
Whatever, it's still government tax dollars. To spend that much money just to determine where trucks could go...
There's a lot of costs involved.
I'm sure there is.
Engineering and solutions and things, and it's a big problem.
Okay.
Joel, I have a couple of questions for the public. I was concerned with that, too. And I have a couple of questions here for you. I've got an email from David Johnson here, but he said, "Look, we all know 228 is way too long, but right on here, there's Route 68 and Route 356." I grew up all my life on Route 68, and I know there's intersections there that need to be addressed critically. You know, it took a while, you know this yourself, it took a while to address the 68-422 intersection there, it was very dangerous for a long time. I was very grateful for that. That was especially important for the hospital, now that they have that off, you know, to get on and off, so that was a terrific improvement. My question to you is this, and for the public. What do you, how are you gonna have, like, Butler Township and these surrounding communities with these problems? How do you bring them into the mix to get their input and work on this so we're not wasting the money here? Can you explain that? How you interact with them?
No, that will be, that will be up to the contracted engineering firm. They will bring those municipalities together and explain what they propose. This is all in preliminary stages at this point, and what we're looking for is preliminary engineering, and if you look at the specific guidelines of this particular program, it has specific requirements that require low-cost innovative solutions, and in order to do that, you almost have to use existing routes, existing things that will improve the situation of truck traffic in the city of Butler.
And the state money is coming through Pendott?
Yes, 20%.
Okay. Well, one thing, I've, people could laugh at this, but Pendott versus the Terrance High Commission is like, you could go out and hug them. Pendott does things that are really good. I think they have efficient, you know, some of their costs are high for engineering, but I'm so pleased with what Pendott does versus the Terrance High Commission. There's no, there's no comparison. The guys come out to meetings, they're so professional, it's, they took it out of the political realm, to give you, the public, an idea that, you go down to West Virginia and bird, there's bird everything. They've got roads here, bridges. They've got, and they're all bird. Well, these studies, I believe, partly to take it out of the political realm and put it into the need realm, so, I mean, do you think that's part of the process, or what's your opinion?
Well, I just know that I've been working on this project for well over a year and a half, and things just don't happen quickly at Pendott. You just have to keep plugging away at it, and the corridors that you, or you suggested or talked about, those are on the list. We've been working on those programs as well, to try and get them into those projects, and the other one that we want to try and complete is the 228 project.
And obviously, if you were to work on it for that long, you must really believe in it, or you wouldn't be doing it. I mean, I know, we didn't get briefed too much on this, basically with the public. I didn't get briefed too much, and before I bettered, I just wanted to talk to Joel about this, or, you know, get your input, so, I appreciate that, Joel.
Well, I think we're very fortunate, because this was just one specific program that really didn't have a whole lot of dollars in it, and we were very lucky to get it, it was supplied for by quite a number, quite a number of municipalities throughout the entire state.
And you got the award. Okay, thank you, Joel.
Those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The motion carries. Thank you.
Next, under the prison, we'll be asking your approval of a memorandum of mutual aid agreement with the county of Banango to provide emergency mutual aid in the event of a disaster disrupting prison operations or requiring inmate and employee evacuation, and this comes at the recommendation of prison board, who voted on this at their meeting yesterday. May I ask your approval?
Is there a motion?
I'll make.
Go ahead.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it. This is common, we have these with other counties also, it's just a very rare, rare event, something might happen that would require us to evacuate our jail, that we could move prisoners to these other counties. Those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The motion carries.
And under Commissioners, our last item today is an update from the Allegheny Aquatic Alliance on the Conqueness and Creek Cleanup, and here to give you a report is Christina Handley.
There's our two people.
Thank you.
Hello, Commissioners.
Mike is passing out some information, T-shirts.
Good work, you told us here.
Wow, thanks.
You're very welcome.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you very much.
So, I am here today to let you know, and also let the county know, of the results of our cleanup this year, and also to thank you for your continued support with our cleanup project. This year, we had substantial challenges to overcome with high water levels and, and just how wet it was all through August, which was when the cleanup was supposed to be. We had to postpone the cleanup, and that resulted in the lowest volunteer participation that we've had so far. We had just under 100 people show up for the cleanup, but that did not reflect upon our results. We actually removed more this year than we have in the past two years. So, we have removed 58,600 pounds of garbage, including 532 tires on this last cleanup, which means that our total for three years, three cleanups, is 143,600 pounds of garbage and over 1,400 tires, just taken out of 25 miles of Conqueness and Creek. So that means that we have 25 more miles to go.
Plus, is that to junk like old appliances that you had in the garbage?
Exactly. We probably removed about, I'm guessing, around 30 or so shopping carts, all Kmart shopping carts, along the stretch that parallels with Route 8. We've removed probably a bunch of to, I'm sorry, a bunch of couches, different appliances, like you said, I mean, it was just pretty much the same stuff that we've been seeing each year.
Did you check the Kmart, see if they had a reward on the shopping carts?
The shopping carts are the ones that I just, I don't even understand, and we left probably another 50-some in, in the creek that we couldn't get out this past time. We also had a huge challenge with being able to remove the garbage that is parallel to Route 8, because AK Steel owns a lot of the property on one side of the creek, and they are refusing to let us on their property to get out the garbage. The other side is railroad tracks, so we had to work with the railroad this year, and they were great with supporting us and having someone there so that we could safely remove all the garbage, and we literally had to, you know, by manpower, pick it up and carry it over the track, so it was...
That's the Buffalo and Pittsburgh railroad.
Yes, yep.
I think we ought to commend them here at this meeting today for allowing you to do that.
Oh, yes, and they said that next year, they're going to support us again, so, which we definitely see their help. So, despite all the challenges, we've had so much success, and I'm just so proud of, you know, what we've accomplished, and so proud of the community for supporting us these three years, and this coming year, we're going to be working, finishing up the stretch in Butler County. There's probably another 10 miles to go, so we're going to be working from the source down to about the Calmont Road.
Well, thank you. It's fantastic what you've done, and it takes those people like you and your husband to be the driving force behind that, and our hats are off to you and everyone who's came and helped you, because it's fantastic what you've done. Thank you.
It is. When I first began this project, I had no idea, you know, that we would ever reach the amount of garbage that we've removed so far, so every year, I'm just more and more inspired by what we've accomplished, and, and just feeling really, really good, really proud. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
How many, how many volunteers did you have?
We had about 90.
About 90, yeah, that's fantastic. Yeah. I'd like to also say this. Local disposal, I'd like to give them credit. They provided the dumpsters there for about half price of what we thought it would cost. The county worked with that through the Parks and Recreation Department. Gary Bickerden did a great job there, coordinating that effort with them, and used our truck, but local disposal did a great job giving half-price dumpsters for that, greatly appreciated that, and also appreciated, what was that railroad again?
Buffalo and Pittsburgh.
The Buffalo and Pittsburgh Railroad. That was, they informed us of that problem, and I really appreciate David working with the group to help make this success, and also, I've said this before, but I grew up right beside Camp Red Wing. When I was a kid, I went to the convenience store, candy store and stuff, and three-quarters of the way to Renn through, there's a pull-off, and people would actually dump their cars in there. Refrigerators, it, is that pull-off still there?
It is there. Last year, we worked on it and removed a substantial amount of garbage, but then this year, we had to do the same thing.
Yeah, but, but, as grown up as a kid, I saw that. I'm not being facetious at all. Some people would put, you know, junk cars in there, refrigerators, it was disgusting. As a little kid, I always went fishing in that creek. I never dreamed that it would do this. I'm very, very thankful that your work on this, I can't even believe it. Thank you so much for your volunteers.
That's all for new business.
Okay, we have our team business here. Is there a motion to approve the budgetary transfers? Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Is there a motion to approve the new hires?
I'll make that motion.
There are any?
Are there?
Yeah.
Okay, we need a motion to approve the new hires.
Yeah, I made the motion.
Is there a second? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The motion carries. Motion to approve the travel requests?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The motion carries. Is there a motion to approve the requisitions?
I'll move.
I'll move.
I'll make the motion. Or I'll second it, I'll second it, I'm sorry.
Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The motion carries. Is there a motion to approve the check register?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The motion carries. Dr. Time, you're ready, Tom?
Yes, thank you. Mike, regarding Commissioner Eckstein's comments during public comment on two different situations or scenarios. And the first one, in general terms, if a subcontractor attorney would have some legal troubles such as a DUI, that would not automatically affect his or her contract. Is there any penalty to not use one of the attorneys that are considered special counsel?
Well, the penalty would be financial. They agree to work at a rate below their, in some cases, much below their usual contracted rate. So it is a financial pleasure to the county to be able to utilize their services as opposed to somebody who wouldn't provide that discount.
In the second scenario, do you see any legal issue with using Mr. Lynn while he is involved in a civil litigation between two commissioners?
I have to look, I don't see one now. No, I don't. I haven't been asked that question. I haven't analyzed it. The vote to hire Mr. Lynn for place well before that ever occurred, so I don't see where there's a legal issue.
Commissioner McCarron, do you have a problem using Mr. Lynn, being the LA Commissioner, not involved in that issue?
Well, very frankly, I wasn't sure who the Commissioner was talking about as far as the DUI goes.
No, I'm talking about the second. There's two different situations here.
I don't think we have used him this year.
Well, yeah, I was just trying to think what we'd use Doug for, and I don't, nothing comes to mind.
I don't think we have used him this year.
But would you have a problem using him?
If it was necessary, I would not.
Commissioner Pinkerton, do you see a problem using Mr. Lynn?
I have no sense from that.
Commissioner Eckstein?
Yeah, that's totally ridiculous. They spent $20,000. I just said that. I checked it out, the controller yesterday. $20,000. Come on, everybody knows, you know, Dale's friend is doing the judicial sales. The checks come through. If they look at the checks, you know, what tipped me off was I look at the checks and approve the checks. When we do the check register, right here, we say, "Check register, did you look at it?" They approve it. Well, his checks are all over it. It's $20,000 with no end in sight, okay? It's a definite conflict of interest. If the solicitor doesn't think so, he needs to go to ethics classes. Okay, that's what I think. It's plain BS. He wouldn't like it if it was him. He's just saying that with the other two commissioners. You're giving county business to somebody, being the personal attorney for one of the, suing the Commissioner, suing an existing Commissioner. It's hogwash. It's all hogwash. You know, this is just plain blatant corruption, okay? Blatant corruption. Anybody that doesn't think so is just, and as far as him being approved way before, I was sued three months after I was in office, okay? He was approved two months before that. It's two months before I was sued, way before. Well, in my idea, that's not the case, okay? He could have been approved before I ever came into office. I have no knowledge of that. But he was approved for this term two months before I was sued by Dale, and now we're giving him all sorts of county money, okay? That is unethical as hell. You know, it needs to be investigated, what needs to be done, okay? You know, there's judges involved, Judge Jaeger's involved, Judge Aran's involved, she knows about it. They damn well know Judge Jaeger turned him into the AG's office, okay? Damn well know it. It's in the Attorney General's report, and they just cover it up and keep prosecuting me. I'm up to $50,000, and it's a witch hunt. Bring it to trial. Recently, at the Allegheny County, they do a two-year civil case. It just came about. This case is two years and six months old. It's gone nowhere except to penalize me by fining me with their political cronies, okay? Their political supporters. Doug Lynn and his wife gave over $4,000 to Dale's campaign over the years.